Good evening, everyone. Wow, this is so nice to see an audience with us tonight. You guys look beautiful. We're used to seeing a wall. But to see all of these beautiful smiling faces here with us tonight is just a pleasure to have you. So thank you for joining us tonight. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, May 11, 2021. The time is now 7:00 p.m. Board Trustees President Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to take a moment and silence their cell phones or any electronic devices that you have at this time, please. Thank you. We will begin tonight with our pledge of allegiance. So I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Please remain standing, and I'd like for you to have a moment of silence in your own manner. Thank you. You may be seated. On our agenda tonight, our first item is our superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to ask our superintendent, Dr. Rodney Watson, to please share with us.
Thank you, President Newhouse, and other trustees, and all the principals and guests in the audience. Good evening. It's great to see everyone here this evening at our Community Engagement Center for this board meeting. I'm encouraged that we're making progress returning more to normal operations, not just within the district, but as we all know, within our community as well. We do have a very full agenda with some very important presentations this evening. One is from our partners at Cambridge Education, who has worked with us to conduct our Equity Study. So tonight, we're going to hear some themes and data from that study, which included surveys, focus groups, and interviews. And we thought it to be particularly important to the work as we're moving forward that all of our administrators are here with us this evening. Just to be clear, this Equity Study is just part of our work towards ensuring we are creating a learning environment within Spring ISD where all students will have what they need to be successful. As superintendent, I look forward to having ongoing conversations about equity so we can ensure that we are doing what's best for kids as we seek excellent and equitable outcomes for our students. Last Thursday night, we got some good news. We learned that the district will be receiving a little over $100 million in federal funds to help offset the costs of the pandemic and learning. These funds create a lot of opportunity as well as a responsibility and accountability as we align those resources with our goals of improved student outcomes. At last week's board meeting, we reviewed your feedback that you gave us, and we're going to continue to make sure that we are planning appropriately as we seek to close gaps. We're going to continue to seek feedback. We have meetings scheduled next week with our Parent Advisory Council as well as our Ministerial Alliance, and we'll continue pulling principles for focus groups as well. As you'll hear tonight, we're going to continue to have a detailed discussion on our budget so we can bring final recommendations to the board in June for your approval. Last but not least, we all know we are very excited. Graduation is coming up, especially for those of us who have kids that are getting ready to graduate. And it's hard to believe that graduation is less than four weeks away. So to ensure nobody misses out, we're offering a lot of different ways for families to take part. For those who want an in-person event, we're going to be hosting ceremonies at our Planet Ford Stadium the first weekend in June. For those who can't make it in person, we will be live streaming all graduations on our website. And just like last year, we're also offering virtual graduation ceremonies as well. They're scheduled for Monday, excuse me, June 7. District administrators and graduation coordinators have been working extremely hard to ensure a wonderful event, no matter whether it's in person or virtual. So our graduates have a few weeks of school left, and we want to make sure that everyone finishes strong so they can enjoy this milestone. Please, parents, make sure you continue to work with your kids, as I am, to make sure they get all of their missing work turned in. Last but not least, we do have some celebrations. With a big shout out to all of our educators who were celebrated last week during Teacher Appreciation Week. I know many campuses had special events, and our district's Family and Community Engagement Team also participated by handing out what we call blessing bags with the help of our community partners. We're grateful for the hard work of our teachers every day of the year and not just during Teacher Appreciation Week. We thank them for all of their hard work and all that they continue to do. And in case you haven't heard, this week also is National Police Week. So we also want to thank all of our officers for all of their hard work that they continue to do as well. And a very special thank you to Chief Colbert and his team for the work that they do supporting and making sure that our community is safe. Let's give our police department a round of applause. That does include my announcements for today. Thank you all very much. I'll hand it back over to you, President Newhouse.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Our board tonight would like to take a moment and ask for your assistance. Last week, we discovered that we missed our superintendent's birthday. So we want to stop and take a moment and ask you to join us in a happy birthday song as we present a nice little token of our appreciation of his work for our district and a little birthday gift. So Dr. Watson, for you. And all together, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. Watson. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Dr. Clark, I did not see your mask moving, so we'll redo that tomorrow morning. Thank you all very much.
You're quite welcome, and you enjoy your belated birthday. In fact, go back and do it again. And enjoy. Thank you. At this time, I know our trustees may have some remarks that they'd like to make, but I would like to begin by asking you to give another round of applause to the Westfield High School Mariachi Band. And if you missed it, the ladies in the beautiful dresses, the folklorico dancers. Thank you, Dr. Watson. They were beautiful. Thank you, thank you. And we're very appreciative of that. That is a first for our district. So we are happy to have them, and we know we're going to share them with the community and other performances as well. Thank you. Other board members have anything they'd like to share with us?
I'd just like to take a moment to thank the district for we had a very successful spring livestock show a couple of weeks ago. I want to thank the educators that contributed, the community that contributed, those of you that came out. I believe the livestock show raised over $130,000, which is the most we've raised since 2015. Thank you. A lot of that money goes back to those students to purchase animals for next year, college funds, and Tri Club gives out quite a few scholarships each year. So we had a very successful show. I think our students were extremely excited about actually being able to participate. We didn't have a show last year. So they were excited about coming out there, and everyone just had a great time. We practiced our social distancing, wore our masks. And thank you for everyone that contributed to making it safe out there. So we had a great show, very successful. So thank you all very much.
I wanted to take an opportunity to say welcome to everyone. It is so exciting to see faces. Madam President indicated earlier, we've been looking at the back wall mostly in the boardroom. So this is a pleasure. But I wanted to take a moment and recognize all of our teachers. I know last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I got out and did some appreciations and posted on my social media. But I wanted to say that they are the glue. Learning happens between the teacher and that student. And as a board, I know I speak for all of us. We are so excited to celebrate the hard work that they've done, especially with the challenges that we've had over the last year. So I didn't want the time to go by without letting our teachers know how much we appreciate them.
I want to echo Trustee Durant's gratitude to our teachers, especially given that I have three children in the district that are benefiting from our high-quality teachers. Another round of applause, if you please. And I was trying to find the young man's name, Dr. Watson, who I saw in an article he was accepted into all these Ivy League schools. He's going to Harvard. It's a direct reflection on the quality of the educators in our district. And if I can find his name, I would like to give him a shout out for his excellent work. And again, thank the Emerge folks for the work they're doing with our students.
I'd like to thank the district for growing our own. We had an exciting signing ceremony last week where students who have been following the education strand in their coursework signed future contracts to come back and teach at Spring ISD. Of course, this was apparently their first job offer as a teacher. And after this ceremony, officiated beautifully by our wonderful president, Rhonda Newhouse, and others in our district, after that, we started comparing the salaries that teachers make now compared to what we made back in the day. And we're just really proud to be able to be competitive in Spring ISD and hope we see those teachers back.
Thank you, thank you. We will now continue with our next item, which we are always very proud of, our Point of Pride Award. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief Communications Officer. Is it Sylvia Wood?
Good evening, Board President Newhouse, trustees, Dr. Watson, and everyone here in attendance this evening, both here in person and those of you watching via Zoom. As a reminder for anyone who might be new to our Point of Pride program, these awards are given to students and staff with achievements that extend beyond the district level, so state, national, or global recognition. With that said, let's jump in. For our first Point of Pride tonight, we're pleased to welcome our Odyssey of the Mind teams from Dewitt Middle School, Heritage Elementary School, and Robertson Middle School. These teams represented Spring ISD at the 2021 Odyssey of the Mind State Tournament, where Dewitt took second place in their problem and division, and Heritage and Robertson both took third place in theirs. We have our Spring ISD Director of Advanced Academics, Ms. Tiffany Williams, here with us this evening to tell us more about the teams and the state tournament. But I just want to take a moment to note the significance of this impressive showing from each of these schools. Although the Odyssey of the Mind program has a distinguished history going back more than 40 years, this is only Spring ISD's third year to take part. The completion is all about teamwork. Competition is all about teamwork, quick thinking, and creative problem solving. And these students have learned the ropes fast. It's a pleasure to have them and their coaches with us here tonight and to welcome Ms. Williams to tell us a little more about this exciting program and the opportunity for our students. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, Board of Trustees, cast, and guests. What an exciting opportunity this is to celebrate our district's participation and achievement in Odyssey of the Mind. As Sylvia mentioned, three teams finished in the top three for their divisions at the 2021 Texas Odyssey of the Mind State Finals Virtual Competition held in March. In teams of seven, students chose one of five competitive problems to create an authentic product and present their long-term solution within an eight-minute timeframe. Under the guidance of an Odyssey of the Mind coach, teams work on their solution within a strict set of criteria, including a defined timeline and even a financial budget. Dewitt Middle School, coached by Brandy Laney, chose problem number three, Classics, Omer and the Beanstalk. All teams had to use Arm &amp; Hammer baking soda to create a prop that grows or appears to grow and include an original life lesson as part of their performance. Team members include Candace Lawrence, Liliana Silva, Natalie Hurtado, and Andrea Chavez. Please join me in congratulating Dewitt Middle School for receiving second place in the Texas Odyssey of the Mind State Finals Competition. It is very important to also note, in our three years participating in Odyssey of the Mind, Dewitt Middle School has received region or state recognition each year. At this time, Ms. Laney will share a few words on this accomplishment.
Good evening, everyone. Not all of my team members were able to be here tonight. So on behalf of all of the girls, it is an honor to be recognized tonight by the Spring ISD School Board. This journey has been an amazing experience for our team. As you know, Odyssey, the Mind teams can have up to seven members. Our team pulled together and achieved great things with only four members. So they really pulled together and got things done. We're looking forward to World Final results in a few weeks and our continued success next year.
Thank you, Ms. Laney. Next, we have Heritage Elementary, coached by Sequesha Barnes. They chose problem number four, It's a Trap. In this problem, teams design and build a structure made of only balsa wood and glue that holds as much weight as possible after it is used to trap a moving object. Team members are Kira Barnaby, Lauren Chimaiasi, Eliza Carmouch, Jeffrey Dubon, Leonel Salgado, and Sophia Salgado. Please join me in congratulating Heritage Elementary School for receiving third place in the Texas Odyssey of the Mind State Finals Competition. At this time, Ms. Barnes will share a few words on this accomplishment.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, myself, and my team. Not everyone is here, but to those that are here, thank you for coming. First, I would like to say how much I personally enjoyed the opportunity as being chosen as my campus's Odyssey of the Mind coach this year. I love seeing how, over the span of getting prepared for the competition, my students worked from start to finish as a team, being leaders and naturally knowing their individual strengths and trusting one another to achieve the end goal. I cannot be more proud of my team, and I look forward to seeing how we do in Nationals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Last but not least, Robertson Middle School's team, coached by Anne Marie Jamar, chose problem number five, Superhero Socks: A Cliffhanger Beginning. In this problem, all teams were required to create an extreme weather setting, a humorous character, and a sound effect that occurs whenever the character activates a pair of super socks. Team members are Vibeeth Hernandez, Christopher Zatino, Yassalyn Cinco, Martha Baruca, Kendrea Fitzgerald, and Nadia Chavaria. Please join me in congratulating Robertson Middle School for receiving third place in the Texas Odyssey of the Mind State Finals Competition. At this time, Ms. Jamar will share a few words on her accomplishment.
Good evening, everyone. I first want to say thank you to the school board for supporting programs like Odyssey. Odyssey enables students, these six students specifically, to stretch themselves, both mentally and emotionally. The six scholars at Robertson have never actually even met each other in person. We've done the whole entire thing virtually online. When this started, they all kind of had big question marks. Am I smart enough? Am I creative enough? Am I brave enough? Though these accolades are amazing, and we do appreciate them with all of our hearts, I think at this point, they really just want to hug each other, give each other high fives, and say, yes, we are smart enough, we are brave enough, and we are creative enough. And we look forward to our competitions this Friday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jamar. To conclude, our teams had the opportunity to make revisions and updates to their solutions and presented them virtually on April 30. We are anxiously awaiting for the results from the virtual World Finals later this month. At this time, we would like to give a huge thanks to Tren Russell, Principal of Heritage Elementary School, Tracy Walker Daniels, Principal of Robertson Middle School, and Stacy Smith, Principal of Dewitt Middle School, for supporting Advanced Academics and Odyssey of the Mind. Thank you, President Newhouse, and Dr. Watson, and the members of the board for your investment of your money, your time, and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you. Ms. Wood, would you continue?
Sure. So, Ms. Williams, all your students will receive a special Point of Pride plaque. So we'll be getting those out to the students as soon as we can. So for our next Point of Pride this evening, it's one that was earned by the district thanks to the hard work and dedication of the Performing and Visual Arts Team, and in particular, our wonderful Spring ISD music educators. These music teachers are there at every stage of development, instilling a love of music and teaching the fundamentals to our youngest Spring ISD students, then guiding them further and further toward excellence and mastery as they get older and pursue dedicated studies in voice or chosen musical instrument. The quality of music education at Spring ISD has ripple effects, producing students who are more engaged across the curriculum and who show up every day, ready and excited to take part. And now, for the eighth year in a row, Spring ISD has been named to the National List of Best Communities for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation, the philanthropic arm of the National Association of Music Merchants. The award honors districts for their achievements in providing access to a quality music education for all students. And it's exciting to see Spring ISD earning the distinction again this year. At this time, I'd like to invite our Director of Performing and Visual Arts, Dr. Joe Clark, up to the podium to say a little more about the award and all that goes into earning it. There you go. You can hold that.
Oh, that's too much pressure. I gotta put that down. All right, thank you, Sylvia. Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. For many years, you have recognized and supported the incredible power of fine arts and music education in Spring ISD. As a district, we've now been recognized for eight consecutive years. And in that past, we have shared with you the data, the facts, the figures about how truly challenging it is to be selected as one of the few districts across the nation to receive this award. But tonight, I'd like to do something just a little different. To qualify for the Best Communities in Music Education Award, Spring ISD had to answer very, very detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music classes, participation, instructional time, facilities, support for all music programs, K-12, partnerships with professional organizations, and any and all community music-making programs and opportunities in the community. It's a very thorough application process. It takes a very long time, very detailed. All of these areas are supported and guided by you and your vision, the Board of Trustees, and have been for decades. And so I've thanked you with data and speeches and smiles for seven years. You can't see it, but I'm smiling now. That's my biggest complaint about masks, you can't see the smile. I'm going to steal that, I like that. And years, but this year, with your permission, I'd like to share two examples of the direct impact that you've made on the future of our students. Okay? So with that, ironically, a few weeks ago, and Mr. Cooper's in the back, he's the band director at Decane High School, the head director. He was in rehearsal, and he suddenly stopped teaching. And ironically, this coincided with the Best Communities in Music Education, because it's the exact same question. And he asked his class, how has band helped you since you came to Decane? And then he asked, what does music do for you? I heard Manny's, and this is Manny and Dino, and he had an answer that I was so compelled that I wanted him to come and share his answer with you guys. So Manny?
Good evening. My name is Manuel Landino. I am a senior tuba player at Decane High School. I also happily served as band president for the 2020-2021 school year. I want to speak briefly about what music, and particularly being a member of the Decane Band, has done for me. What the Decane Band has done for me in my life is many things. Most importantly, it has created options for my future. Going into ninth grade, I always pictured myself as majoring in mechanical engineering when I went to college. But music and band changed that. Now, yes, of course, that does mean that I have decided to major in music in college. But the reason why is what I would like to point out. Band has created a safe space for me where I can express myself, learn responsibility, and make mistakes without any fear. I learned to figure out the things that I'm good at and things that I am not. I've been able to figure out how to capitalize on the things I do well while continuing to work on the things I need to get better at. For instance, I went from being just average at playing my tuba coming into high school to being named a Texas All-Area Tuba Player my junior and senior year. My band artists are who motivated me to achieve a such a high level. Band has brought into my life a sense of family and community where I never had to go through anything by myself. I feel prepared for the next big thing. And my journey, having been exposed to music and band in middle school and high school, I am fortunate to have great teachers in the Spring ISD Fine Arts to have guided me to my path. Thank you for your time.
And one more life that you have had a huge impact on is Caden Bowie, who was the flute in the Mariachi Band, too, senior at Westfield High School. All right, Caden? And we will work on Happy Birthday and the Mariachi Ensemble. We'll get that next time.
Hello. My name is Caden Bowie. I'm a 12th-grade flute player at Westfield High School. And I started playing the flute in the sixth grade at Wells Middle School and continued throughout my time at Spring ISD. I began learning about music at Reynolds Elementary and was introduced to music on a greater scale in middle school. Upon entering high school, I became a part of the Westfield Big Red Band family, which is one of the best things I've ever done. I wouldn't be standing here today if it weren't for Spring ISD's proclivity for encouraging musicians, beginner and seasoned alike. My teachers and my band experiences provided empowering support for my growth musically, personally, and emotionally. I am headed to Swarthmore College in the fall, the best liberal arts college in the country. And I've been given a full ride. Thank you. I was attracted to this ideal educational setting. because of the freedom I've been shown to express myself through the band program and other musical endeavors. My time in the band has taught me the value of being a global citizen, actively fostering the acceptance and appreciation of ideas from all walks of life. My journey is best recognized as one of a person who knew next to nothing about music, nor ever planned to partake. And now I am a leader and trusted confidant for almost every budding musician I know in our school community. I never imagined I could create for myself and others a sanctuary of confidence, compassion, and artistic expression in the last seven years as a student musician. My experiences in the band program have helped me develop belief in myself, reliance on my teammates, and empathy towards new people. Without the chance to explore the art and craft that is music, my years developing into a young adult would be pretty boring, to say the least. But more specifically, I would not have a lens through which to see the positivity in adversity, the silver lining in every cloud, the success in every failure. I have learned process, community, and problem solving while working with my teammates to achieve a goal. And I have learned that together as human beings, we either win or we learn. We never lose. I plan to continue with music through college and pass on this gift I have so enthusiastically received. I want to say thank you to my community of teachers, mentors, and most importantly, my friends, for this chance to grow through musical performance and expression. I am proud to be representing a school district that makes a habit of creating collaborative environments where musicians feel seen and heard, along with a school district that serves as a pinnacle and example for music educators around the country. It is my hope that this tradition of excellence will continue for the sake of future generations that will pass through Spring Independent School District. Thank you so much for the chance to tell my story, and have a wonderful evening.
Chills, just full-time chills. So, I just want to tell you, we've talked many years, for eight years in a row now, we've talked about this, but this is your vision, and you built the road and we have just followed it. So, I feel very awkward when we get a best communities of music education because it's been your support, not just now, but for decades. It's been here, and you have built that. So, when I say thank you, I mean that from the bottom of my heart. These stories, all we had to do was barely scratch the surface, and I called maybe two directors, and they said, "I got 10 stories." And these stories are the exact one, I know they have a script, but that's exactly what they said in the classroom. They just put their tuba down. They said, "This is my answer." They put their flute down. "This is my answer." And this is what you have provided. So, when I say thank you, thank you for the vision that you guys have provided. I do want to thank Mr. Reynolds and David Mason, if you guys are here, too. Thank you, principals. Thank you, Nathan. They did not know I was going to call their students up here, so thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you for the support, not only for the school board, but incredible principals. This doesn't happen just in one link in the chain. I just want to say thank you for everything that you have done because all of these stories are on every single one of your campuses. So, thank you very much. And thank you, and I'll get in trouble. Thank you, Norma Rodriguez and the PBA team and Corinne. And then they're staring right at me. That would have been dangerous if I didn't thank them. And the PBA team in the back, too. David, Amanda, and Johnny, thank you so much.
I just have to say that these moments are the absolute best thing about being a board member and an educator. The thoughtfulness of you two gentlemen. That's what I always hope, that our support for STEAM and particularly the arts, I always hope that that's what we're getting out of it. And so, brilliant, both of you. And the young man that I was referring to earlier is Cody Chow or Cody Shu, I'm not sure I'm saying his name right, got accepted to every Ivy League he applied to in a bunch, a whole list of other schools, but Swarthmore. I mean, it's amazing. Congratulations to both of you.
Well, I'd like to echo Trustee Adams' comments and say, who says we don't get paid? Because that is a reward that money can't buy. You did my heart good, and we're so very proud of your accomplishments. I'd love to see those speeches recorded and shared through our social media with the rest of the community. That would be amazing. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Clark. But to the two gentlemen, we appreciate your taking time to come and share your journey with us. It was a beautiful journey. We wish you the best when you leave Spring ISD. And if there's anything we can do for you, please don't hesitate to ask. Congratulations on your accomplishment. And again, we wish you all the best luck in the future. Thank you for being with us tonight. Our next item on our agenda is to recognize our Employee Excellence Award winners for February and March of 2021. The Employee Excellence Award is given by the Spring ISD Board of Trustees each month during the school year. The award recognizes district employees who exemplify the district's guiding principles and core values. One employee is selected for this prestigious award each month. So, I would like to begin by recognizing the Employee of the Month of February. This, and I'm going to call a young lady. She is employed at Spring High School, and she provides expert knowledge in regards to four-year plans. She is resourceful in providing students assistance and social, emotional needs, encouragement, and executive function skills. She has a kind attitude, and she maintains a huge open-door policy. This person has stepped up. She's a counselor. Spring has been without a counselor basically the entire year, and this person has absorbed that additional caseloads by providing excellent communication to students, parents, staff, as well as the counseling team. She has worked counselors' hours beyond contract time. So, it is our pleasure to recognize the lead counselor, Laura Goodman, from Spring High School. Ms. Goodman, we have a nice little certificate for you that will be sent to you. And we have some other little goodies. So, I'm going to ask my assistant to the right to share with me something else you will be receiving.
Okay. In addition to the plaque and the award, we are also presenting you with a Spring ISD pin along with a monetary monetary reward to let you know just how much we value and appreciate all of the hard work that you do. You're an asset to our team, and we want to take the opportunity to let you know that.
Wow. Little emotional. Thank you. I do want to just tell you, first of all, I went from shock. I had no idea, none. I went from shock to to now I feel very humbled because, first of all, somebody recognized what was going on and appreciates that. But mainly, I feel humbled because it's been a tough year. It's been a tough year for everybody, students, parents, everybody. And we have a lot of employees at Spring ISD that have worked very, very hard during all of this. And I'm blessed to work for the best principal in the district. Sorry, everybody else. I'm also blessed to work with an amazing counseling department, and I couldn't do what I do if they didn't respond and work very well with me. And amazing teachers at Spring High School. So, to be recognized in the midst of everyone else being so amazing is just so humbling to me. And thank you for the opportunity to help the children in Spring. I love it. I love my job, and I love every single kid that walks through that door. So, thank you so much. I feel I'm just blessed to have this job. And especially to the board, I want to thank you for taking the time to even think of this award. It couldn't have come at a better time. I think my team is excited at Spring High as well. And it just means a lot for someone to recognize that you're trying to work hard. So, thank you very much again.
Our next awardee is our March 2021 winner. This gentleman is respected by the school community and the community at large. He has been seen in the grocery store, talking with parents and kids, and constantly stopping them and helping them and having conversations about their school. He enjoys speaking to them when they're at school and while they're on the campus. Everybody knows where to find him because he's constantly out among the campus. When teachers are locked out of their classrooms, no worry. This gentleman is there with big arms open up, ready to help, and he does this on a daily basis. This gentleman is one of the few plant operators that build relationships with the entire community. We've noticed the respect he has in the cafeteria and the hallways. Since he has been in, since the pandemic, he has been truly making a great difference in keeping the campus clean. I know that he goes into the classrooms to constantly disinfect them before and after school, even especially when we have had tests for COVID. It is with great pleasure that we recognize, from Lewis High School, Mr. James Gilbert. I think I see him on the screen. Mr. Gilbert, we have a nice plaque for you as well that will be sent to your school just for you. And we also have another little presentation, Miss Dela.
Thank you. We also want to recognize you with a Spring ISD pin along with a monetary contribution for all of your hard work. And you know, nobody knows how much you know until they know how much you care. And we were able to just see the love and support and how much care you put back into our students and staff on your campus. And we truly appreciate you.
I think Mr. Gilbert was in such shock, he turned his camera off.
Did we lose him?
Mr. Gilbert, are you still there? I think he hears us.
Mr. Gilbert, please come back.
Did we scare him off?
Take your time and just come back if you'd like to share.
There he is. Now he's on mute.
Don't forget to unmute yourself, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay. I just want to thank everyone. And like I was told when I first came to Spring, treat the kids like they're your own. And I love the kids, and I'm sorry adults, but the kids are number one. And I do everything in my heart for them. So, thank you. Thank everyone. I really appreciate this. Love you to death. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, and we will be getting these items to you. As we continue with tonight's agenda, our next item is agenda participation. This allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Then we will continue. I'd now like to recognize our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other trustees. As you know, this past year, we wanted to ensure that we were doing right by all of our kids and our staff by looking at how our practices could impede or not impede what's happening here in Spring. Right after the incident with George Floyd, we had a conversation at the board, and one of the things that we wanted to ensure was what was going to be our response. During that time, I received numerous phone calls from various community members, as well as some of the principals of the audience, as to what is Spring's response to what's going on in our society? How do we talk to our kids about it? And one of the things that I had stated in the letter that I sent out was that I wanted to do more than just have a conversation. We needed to find out what we needed to do to make sure we're meeting the needs of students. And so, with the support of the board, we developed and set out to find someone to provide information to us around how we are providing equity within the district. And so, tonight, I'm going to introduce our individuals from Cambridge Education, who's going to come and give us our preliminary results regarding our equity study. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Christopher Finn and Karone Staple.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here to share this evening. I am going to actually share my screen here. I know that the board members have copies in front of them, but I hope this might help someone in the space. But I'm going to share my screen. And I want to just ensure, Renee, can you give me a thumbs up if you can see the PowerPoint? Excellent. Okay. So, thank you, Dr. Watson. Thank you to the board members. Already, this has been a dynamic presentation. I'm here on mute, but you got me singing Happy Birthday and clapping for Manuel and Kayden, and really excited about what you guys are doing in Spring ISD. We're going to share with you some preliminary findings from the equity study that we engaged in. And before we formally begin, we are going to introduce ourselves. I'll start by sharing, my name is Christopher Finn. I'm a Senior Education Specialist on Cambridge Education. I have over 25 years of experience in education. I taught in the South Bronx, New York, for many years. I was then a founding teacher and administrator at a school called Promise Academy in Harlem, working with a gentleman named Jeffrey Canada. I then became a principal of a CADA 8 school in Newark for many years. And I've just celebrated my six-year anniversary with Cambridge Education, where I have the opportunity to work with schools around the country. We engage in school quality reviews, equity studies. I engage and work around implicit bias, culturally responsive teaching and learning, and most recently, modules around anti-racism. And really glad to be here this evening to share this work with you all. And my partner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karone Staple. I've been an educator for 35 years. Thirty-four of them have been with the New York City Department of Education. I was a teacher, a special education high school teacher for 16 years, an assistant principal for two years, a principal for eight years, and a superintendent of 58 schools for eight years. So, I've had a lot of time with public education. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to present today. I'm excited to be a consultant with Cambridge Education and excited to be working on this equity study with everyone. It's been a pleasure just talking with students, parents, teachers, board members, assistant supes, everyone in the district. And we're happy to share with you this evening.
Yes. So, let me give you a brief outline. The objectives for tonight's session is we're going to discuss the 10 high-leverage factors that support district effectiveness based on what we've collected in our study. We're going to discuss the 10 high-leverage factors that limit district effectiveness, and we're going to share some recommendations. We are engaging in this through an equity lens, so you'll hear us use a great deal of language around the opportunity and access for students. And we want to do a few things. One is that we want you to try to hold your questions for the end of the presentation, and we will try to answer any questions you have. And I also, you know, the presenter And I also, you know, the, the presenter and me, we're, Karone and I are both not big fans of just reading slides to you all, but we've worded them in such a way that we're going to be reading you some of this information tonight so that hopefully the clarity in what we've engaged in comes across. So, please hold the questions, maybe make some notes to yourself if you have questions, and we will be reading some slides as we move forward. This is the Spring ISD Equity Statement that was shared with us by the district. It has guided our work in our conversations and in the development of the rubric that we used for this process. And we thought it was appropriate to share here at the top of this presentation as well.
Many people have asked us, what is the difference between equality and equity? So we thought it would be important to make that distinction this evening. The distinction between equality and equity is an important one for achieving a quality education for all students. Equality means offering everyone the same thing. It makes assumptions that everyone has had the same opportunities and experiences, speaks the same way, learns the same way, and has had access to the same resources, while equity gives each student what they need to be successful in school and beyond, and is culturally responsive to diverse backgrounds, especially those who have been socio-economically, linguistically, and culturally marginalized.
So, the domains of the equity study exist here. So, there are four domains that we examined and that are outlined in the rubric that we asked several questions on, gathered data on, and are now finalizing a report on. One of those domains is Student Learning and Development Outcomes, as it speaks to academic outcomes for students, but also the access to counselors and support in the schools. Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment speaks to the raw data of students' academic outcomes as well, but also the curriculum that's being used, how that curriculum is enacted live in the classroom, and how students are assessed on what they've been taught. Leadership, Management, and Accountability speaks to all the people there, you know, pretty much this evening, are the people who govern over the schools, who ensure that teachers are teaching appropriately, that they're providing the appropriate resources to students, and managing the school district. And then lastly, is the Family and Community Engagement, where we discuss how families are connected to the school district. Do they have a voice in school-wide decision makings and in decision-making, excuse me, and how they connect with each school as well as connect with the district as a whole?
Since January of 2021 through April, Cambridge has collected a great deal of data. We've interviewed 26 district leaders, met with 21 diverse focus groups. We conducted eight virtual school visits. We collected over 100 data sheets and documents, and we deployed 45,000-plus surveys to parents, staff, and students in grades six through 12.
Okay, so a great deal of information is collected, but I also want people to recognize the triangulation of the data. So, what I'm sharing with you today, or what we're sharing with you today, is it's going to present the high leverage broad factors that support and limit district effectiveness. There will be a more granular and detailed report delivered to you by the end of this month. There are literally charts and graphs being produced currently, and there are still some data pieces that we're going to be adding as we conclude the report. Tonight, you're just going to see small samplings of pieces of data throughout the report, but I want you to recognize that what we do with the data collected is we triangulate that data. Some of you may be really familiar with this, but we thought it was important to outline it. In this triangle that's, that's shown here, we're looking to find the impact or the district effectiveness, if you will. And at the top left is the quantitative data. That's the actual hard data, academic outcomes, student graduation rates, attendance, discipline numbers, that kind of hard data that is collected over time. To the right on the top of the triangle, you see stakeholders' views. Those are the views that we've collected via the interviews and focus groups of numerous people throughout the district. So we're getting the people's perception on the ground and their take on what's happening in the district. And then lastly, at the bottom of that triangle, you see the direct observation. And that's when we've had the opportunity to virtually visit some of your schools and collect further data during those observations. So, I want to just make it clear that there isn't just one piece of data that would have us decide something. We literally can't call it an impactful area unless we've triangulated that data with the data we've collected. So again, tonight, you might see small samplings of data, but know that nothing can come to the level of a factor that supports or limit without first having been triangulated. Okay? And we're going to begin. And these are some of the high leverage factors, again, that support district effectiveness. And, and for the sake of the presentation, we've boiled it down to 10 and 10, so I want you to recognize the factors that support district effectiveness. So here's our first one. This pertains to Student Learning and Development Outcomes. The majority of students feel safe and respected by their peers and teachers, which helps them increase engagement and connection to their schools. Another one is schools of choice have high expectations and effectively prepare students for college. So down here, you'll see a small sampling of data that's actually a survey, student survey item, where 82% of students feel that diversity, equity, and inclusion are important at their school. And we'll also note that during many of the school visits, students felt really greatly connected to their schools. They felt safe and supported in their schools.
The next slide talks about District Leadership, Management, and Accountability. The district's role in training school leaders by partnering with Holdsworth for leadership training is creating a cohort of more experienced and better-prepared school leaders. The district has a range of educational programs and partners, and seeks grants to support the academic and social emotional needs of all students. The district's staff, parents, and community members are thoroughly committed to making the district a more equitable place to work and learn. Most stakeholders value the district's diversity and welcome an examination of equity across schools, policies, and practices. Stakeholders express a willingness to make equitable changes and implement positive policies for students and staff, providing an effective environment to enhance equity as a district. As we spoke to many of the school leaders who were involved in the Holdsworth training, they were very excited about it. They felt it was really preparing them to be very strong leaders within the district, and they were very excited that the district had partnered with Holdsworth for this purpose. Additionally, we have found that all of the people that we spoke to at the district level are very committed to equity. They're very committed to the social, emotional, and academic needs of, of, of students, and are doing everything they can to hold themselves accountable for ensuring that all students are receiving equitable outcomes.
Excellent. Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. The district provides schools with quantitative data and has regular check-ins around academic benchmarks, discipline, and school goals, providing with, providing them with the tools needed to make effective data-driven decisions. We found that leaders, teachers, campus-level employees really spoke highly of the district's ability to provide them with disaggregated data that they could use to then make data-informed decisions in their schools, in PLCs and teacher planning meetings. That was evident when we also visited some teacher planning meetings and when we heard from the constituents.
The next slide is about Engagement of Families, the Community, and Other Stakeholders. Most parents and students feel respected by adults at the school and district levels, creating a respectful and professional atmosphere. The Family Engagements Office multimedia district communication efforts supports effective two-way exchange platforms. The district's collaboration with all stakeholders on various committees, such as ACE, Student Advisory, Parent Advisory, the Ministry, et cetera, promotes inclusivity across the district. The district's outreach to families in need of food, technology, and wraparound services is effective in meeting family needs. And here you see a snippet of the survey where 75% feel that meeting the needs of our diverse community is built into all our school planning and practices. And this item is from the staff survey.
Correct. Okay, now we're going to go into Factors That Limit District Effectiveness as based on the Equity Study, and we're also going to provide some recommendations on the slides. So you will have a more detailed granular report towards the end of this month, but we thought it was also appropriate to share some early recommendations around this work. So I'm going to start with the first factor. Social Emotional Teaching and Learning. Social emotional teaching and learning is not provided consistently across every school. This limits opportunities for students to talk about their feelings, settle conflicts, and learn strategies to manage their behaviors and emotions. Our recommendation is that you create or adopt a pre-CADA 12 SCL curriculum that is implemented throughout the school year to support social, emotional, and mental health, self-esteem, coping, and responsibility for one's behaviors. This curriculum should be consistent across schools to support students who may transition from school to school across the district. And as one of the, I believe, recipients of one of the awards shared this evening, this has been a very tumultuous year for students, parents, family members, and educators across the district. So, this social emotional learning piece can support the district moving forward in helping students with their mental health and their social emotional needs. I'll also share this slide about Counseling. Guidance counselors, this speaks to counseling across the district. Guidance counselors are often assigned non-counseling duties at many schools and are therefore unable to address the needs of students beyond their academic counseling needs. Many students who are experiencing trauma or at-risk in other ways do not have consistent access to mental, emotional health supports. College and career counseling is not consistently available to students across schools. The ratio of students to guidance counselors is too high in many schools. Our recommendation is that we redirect district fiscal resources to fund at least one at-risk counselor in each school, as well as college counselors for every high school to ensure all students have opportunities to explore college and careers and post-secondary options. These at-risk counselors should also facilitate professional learning sessions with teachers and students regarding strategies to address trauma, depression, and build coping skills. I hope that after these two, you're, you're starting to see some of the connection here, but what was interesting here, and I want to point this out, is that students would never share that they cannot find a counselor or that the counselors are not there. What they shared was that counselors are often required to do more academic counseling, adjust their classes, make sure that their credits are on point, make sure they're in the right class, and they had less time for them to address their social emotional issues. And then when speaking to guidance counselors, they spoke to how often they were asked to do things outside of the traditional realm to support the school, to support students, but it would decrease their ability to handle students who were suffering from trauma or experiencing trauma throughout the school day.
Some schools exhibit low expectations for English-language learners. Our recommendation is to invest in year-long, job-embedded, district-wide professional learning for school leaders, coaches, and teachers on aligning expectations to the students' developmental needs as well as to the curriculum. This professional learning should be mandatory across the district, and the benchmark should be implemented to measure the impact of this initiative. Next, academic growth is inconsistent and limited due to low expectations, a lack of student engagement, and low rigor in work products across some schools. Our recommendation is to deliver district-wide professional development with instructional leaders on rigor, expectations, and instructional strategies to support students who struggle with learning and literacy that they can turnkey and implement on the school level. Implement research-based curriculum with proven results and monitor for fidelity at the classroom and school levels. One of the things that we spoke about with the, the students and, and with the, with, with the teachers was what we were seeing in, in the classroom, some in our virtual visits, and just some of the conversations that we had in our focus groups. And many of them shared with us a need for more professional development from the district to support them with lesson planning, to support them with high expectations, to support them with how they can make the classroom a more rigorous place to learn for the students. And if you look at the next slide, when we disaggregated some of the data from the students, and this data that you're looking at is responses from the English-language learners that responded, 47% of them said, "There are some things I am not capable of learning." And so, we just wanted to point out that snippet of the survey to you, which was disaggregated by Ls, just to show you how they're feeling and the connection that it made to the data point that I just shared.
Okay. I'm moving on to the Disproportionate Discipline of Black Males. A disproportionate number of exclusionary disciplinary referrals for black males and black males in special education, coupled with a lack of SEL and restorative justice practices, continue to negatively impact the academic and social growth of this co- this cohort. Our recommendation is to conduct culturally relevant professional development with school leaders and teachers on implicit bias and assumptions about students of color and their behaviors. Require all schools to infuse restorative justice practices into their discipline policies to support the decrease of student referrals and out-of-school suspensions. One thing I wanted to note is it's important to talk about how these things are connected, right? And I, I shared with the board earlier that this disproportionate discipline number of black males, which is something that the district is aware of, I wanted to also express to you all how it impacts other parts of the district or other parts of students' academic outcomes, right? So on the surface, a student being disciplined and excluded from school via a suspension or what have you, often means that they're missing core instruction or they're receiving instruction that is not commensurate with what they're receiving on their traditional campus. Another thing is about the adults in the district and their potential assumptions or implicit biases around students of color and their behaviors, and how oftentimes, black males are referred or over-referred to special ed because of negative behaviors or what people perceive as negative behaviors. So here's a few slides here. This one talks about the racial composition of the district, which many of you are aware of, heavily Hispanic and African-American district, very black and brown district. But if we look at this next slide, you see that black students are some of the least students enrolled in the higher-level courses in the district, right? So there are high-level AP courses that African-American students either are not feeling that they can join, or they feel like they don't have the academic support, or quietly, people around them and the lowered expectations of people around them will not push or encourage them to engage in these programs. Now, we know that's not pound-for-pound what happens with every single student, but when you look at the data across, you can see these things happening in the district. You'll also note here that the African-Americans are one of the least represented in the gifted and talented program in the district as well. So, this speaks to that discipline piece. It's not solely because of discipline, but what we're trying to point out is that the discipline has other impacts across the district, right? The over-representation of students in special ed and the over-representation of students receiving suspensions or excluded from school can lead to these other things happening consistently in the district. Okay?
The next slide is about referrals to special education. A disproportionate number of black students being referred to special education will continue to widen the academic achievement gap. Students in special education are often referred to DAEP due to multiple behavioral infractions, causing them to be suspended and miss core instruction and support as required on their IEPs. Our recommendation is to review the process Our recommendation is to review the process for referring any student to special education, but with a special, specific focus on black males who are being referred for special education at a disproportionate rate. Provide de-escalation training for school leaders, deans and campus behavior counselors and managers to decrease the number of students being referred to special education for behavioral incidents. Provide professional learning and support for teachers on the root causes of student misbehaviors that may include academic, cultural, environmental, trauma and socioeconomic factors.
Okay, you know, I've been asked, Karone, to make a comment about the Ls, to share some of what we shared about the Ls in the, in the board meeting. And I want to do it with, in a respectful way without noting the school. So I'm just gonna say to the room that when we discussed Ls and we talked about the lowered expectations from Ls, you know, we were privy to many focus groups where teachers were talking about English language learners. We were also privy to school meetings where teachers were reviewing data around English language learners. And what we heard in some of the conversations spoke to the lowered expectation. So in, in an example, I'll just share that an adult was talking about their students' academic outcomes. And this is just one example, you know, but a teacher was talking about the students' academic outcomes and the students had really performed poorly on this benchmark exam. And the teacher then shared, "Oh, but you know, there's, those are my Ls though. I just wanted to point out those are my Ls. So they're performing poorly, but you know, those are my Ls." The conversation went on for about another five minutes. It went back to this particular teacher's data around the, the class that bombed the exam was this teacher's tone. And the teacher then said again, "But you know, those are my Ls though. I just want the room to know that those are my L students who are performing poorly." And then again, made the comment. So three times within a twenty, thirty-minute window, when discussing Ls, the tone was that of, "You know the Ls are gonna perform poorly anyway," right? As if them being the English language learners was the excuse for them performing poorly. And we know that Ls have, you know, we struggle, students with, with disabilities struggle, students in special education struggle, but it's the mindset and the expectation of the adults in the building that can often shift and impact that and support those students. One of the board members who we shared this information preliminarily to was also very astute in pointing out, "Look at how the Ls actually believe, they are starting to believe as represented on this former slide here. They're actually believe that they cannot do the work, right? They actually are saying to themselves, 'There are some things I'm not capable of learning,'" which speaks to how they even have internalized some of these lowered expectations. So I was asked via text to double back to that, so I'm sorry, Karone. I just wanted to touch that point. And then we will move forward. We've discussed the referrals to special education. I will now discuss professional development opportunities. And professional development opportunities to address, to address achievement for all students, including English language learners and students with disabilities, are limited at the school level. This limits the ability to appropriately engage students in a culturally diverse and academically challenging urban environment. So frankly, down here, there's a little note from one of the teacher surveys where the teacher is saying, "I have enough financial and material resources to be able to educate each and every student." So only forty-two percent of teachers feel that way. And what's interesting is although this points to material resources, what we've heard from many teachers and many school leaders is that they don't yet feel they have the professional knowledge or the pedagogy to address this population. So it's not solely the material resources like books and pens and pencils, but it's also the training in order for them to feel confident to address this population and have the highest expectations for them as well. So our recommendation here is to coach teachers to understand and implement research-based instructional strategies to better support students with disabilities and English language learners to promote increased student achievement across the district. Okay.
The next slide is about new teacher onboarding. The average teacher in spring ISD has less than five years of experience and is still developing the skills to effectively engage with all students, particularly Ls and students with disabilities. Our recommendation is assure that district onboarding provides new teachers with information about the demographics of the district and/or individual schools, expectations for academic achievement, lesson planning, introduction to the scope and sequence of the curriculum, instructional strategies to deal with challenging subgroups and classroom management tools. Create a mandatory professional learning program for early-career teachers so they are provided with specific learning, job embedded and professional learning opportunities connected to teaching, learning and engagement. In addition, provide incentives for veteran teachers who have displayed proven academic results and encourage them to lead professional learning sessions in their respective schools. If you look at this slide, you will see that forty-eight point five percent, almost fifty percent of the district has between one to five years of experience. So it's really important that they get more than a couple of days of onboarding. When we spoke to teachers, they stated that they got a brief overview about the district and basically they went to their schools and just had to learn on the go. And they really were wishing that they had a little bit more time to acclimate, maybe know something about the students they would be teaching, maybe get more familiar with the curriculum that they would be using so that they could just feel better prepared as new teachers to the district.
Okay. Curriculum. A constantly changing curriculum coupled with a lack of literacy training for teachers who have struggling readers has resulted in achievement gaps. Our recommendation is to provide curriculum across grades that is academically appropriate, culturally inclusive and engaging, then monitor implementation and results for at least three years to determine effectiveness. Provide literacy training for teachers in grades K-three and ensure every school has a literacy coach and a reading teacher or reading specialist to address learning differences, language barriers, struggling readers and other issues that limit proficiency in reading and writing. And frankly, kind of buying into a curriculum that you plan on staying with for a consistent amount of time to allow teachers to really acclimate and become masters of delivering the content. And also when the teachers receive the curriculum, training them to help make it more engaging and culturally responsive. It's powerful to have a, a curriculum that lands that is culturally responsive. But I'll share, I have not yet met the curriculum that appropriately supports every culture. So we need to ensure that teachers have the ability to take the, the written curriculum and make it more culturally responsive and relevant to the students that they serve. And here are some star reading results, just to speak to some of the academic gaps across the district. We imagine you are aware of these, this data as well. And then we land here.
The last slide is about implicit bias and cultural diversity training. Opportunities for professional learning on issues of equity, implicit bias, racism, discrimination, disproportionality and the needs of English learners are inconsistent and limited. Not all students receive adequate resources and services, thus hindering their achievement. Our recommendation is to provide district-wide training on implicit bias and culturally responsive teaching and learning for all employees beginning September 2021. District and camp, campus-level leaders should also attend and ensure that the training includes reflective learning for adults as well as implicit strategies to take directly to the classroom.
Okay. So that ends the formal piece of the presentation. I'm going to stop sharing and we will take questions that you all have. Before we take questions, I also want to note, we're joined today by our partner Renesha and Danae as well, who has supported us in this project throughout. She also, you know, manages the research and the survey pieces of the report so she could speak to those questions as well. So we would, Dr. Watson, allow for any questions? I know it's a great deal to absorb in a short period of time.
I guess I'll begin. Thank you for the presentation. Chris and...
Karone, Karone.
Well, my, we all, your page is not, there's no page, there's page twenty-four. The professional development opportunities. Can you go to that slide for a minute for me? Page twenty-four, or slide twenty-four?
I'll get there.
I know that I was discreet historically and I know we offer quite a bit of professional development opportunities. Could you kind of just enlighten me and my colleagues, particularly what was a major concern pertaining to professional development? I know historically we don't, we think that we're doing a good job of offering those opportunities and giving, you know, giving time for the development opportunities. And also, you know, we also fund those opportunities also. Can you just enlighten me exactly, you know, what surround, how you made that recommendation?
Yes, sir. So one, yes, sir. One thing that actually many teachers have noted as a benefit of the district is that the district provides this suite of PD offerings, right? Teachers would share that they can go to this, this list, a district site where you provide multiple professional development opportunities and they can choose from these different opportunities. But here's, here's the rub. Some of them, we've determined and they've shared openly, are taking some PD sessions that might not, A, immediately fit their individual need, right? So for example, you're having difficulty with classroom management, but you've chosen to take a professional development session on like math strategies, right? So although your pedagogy is suffering because of your inability to manage the classroom, the professional development you're taking is not in alignment with the direct support you need as an individual instructor. Number two, many campus leaders frankly, were not immediately aware of what professional development their teachers were taking, right? So a teacher can go on their own and take six, seven, I don't know how many different PD sessions, but the principals were not immediately always familiar with which PD offerings their teachers were taking, which then lends itself to a lack of alignment in the school, right? If, if we've decided at X school to work this year on increasing our writing, but half of the teaching staff are taking math PDs, it's not even in alignment with what we want to do on the ground on the campus. So there is not a lack of professional development opportunities. I share that it's just not a consistent kind of strategized movement for each school in the district.
Additionally, teachers shared with us that at the school level, they do receive professional development from their, from their principals, but it is not always connected to learning more about how to support English language learners and students with disabilities. And, and it's, it's not the same. So for, for instance, there's not a mandate coming from the district according to them that every single principal must provide this type of professional development. It's left up to each principal individually as to what type of professional development opportunities they'd like to offer or provide for their, for their teachers. So our recommendation is really to have a consistent research-based strategy to support all teachers. Because at some point in time, all teachers are going to come in contact with students where their first language is not English or they may have a disability. So we're just looking for some sort of consistent professional development opportunity across the district that all teachers are mandated to take.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Has this data been shared previously with our principals?
No, ma'am.
I would like to ask if we have any principals in the audience who would like to ask questions. Please feel free to come up to the podium and give us your question or your concern or your thought. Please share it with us. This information is for all of us.
I do have a comment. When I asked my question, I had a comment in mind. And as tough as this conversation is and as hard as some of this is to hear, none of this news to me, which is even worse. So I think we have, we have a lot of work to do. I think we're all capable with, because I think in all of our hearts, we want what's best for kids. But I question myself because I've sat in the seat a very long time. And to still see the same, some of the same challenges is, is disheartening and makes me question, you know, what are we doing? How do we fix it? Some of the conversations we've had just over the last couple of months, I asked just last Thursday night about, "Stop moving the cheese on the curriculum." You know, there's, there's things that we have to, to kind of take a look at how we can get better at it. And I mean, I haven't had a chance to digest this, so I'm really kind of commenting from an emotional standpoint. I think we have wonderful principals and leaders in our community. And one of the things we talked about at last month's work session, when I think it was Mr. Williams who talked about the program and the processes that we're having and the ability for the autonomy to give the principals the autonomy they need to pivot where they need to pivot. Because we cannot cookie cutter, you know, processes and programs for every single campus. You know, we have to allow that flexibility and have to allow the leaders that are in place to, to make that. I know there's core and basic requirements that need to exist there, but I think, I think we need a, I think we need a major shift. We talked about it at our board workshop, performance development needs to be mandatory. So I think we just really need to put on our armor, unite and, and tackle it and make decisions around what's best for our kids. I appreciate this data confirms, you know, a lot of the conversations that we've had, but I don't want to just talk about it tonight. I want to do something about it.
I think this speaks to the very definition of equity. And I want everyone in the room to understand that this, I, I'm a slow processor. It's one of the things that as a teacher, because I was a slow processor, I always accounted for my students that were slow processors. This is the time to self-reflect. This isn't about blaming anybody for anything. This is about, okay, this is us collectively and these are the things that we need to do for our kids. And so I agree with Trustee Durant. The, I want to extend sort of an invitation, if I may, that the time to ask questions is continuous. We should always be asking the questions that I think Trustee Newhouse, President Newhouse has in mind. And I'm gonna need some time to think about this stuff. Because I'm, I'm not that surprised either, but it is kind of hard to hear. So that's my piece.
One of the things that has struck me with this data was how we have so many new teachers. And having worked with new teachers, been a new teacher, it takes you a while to learn how to teach. It just does. And I think that one of the best things I've seen recently in education are the PLCs. When you have a really strong group of teachers all teaching the same subject and they get to actually discuss how they're going to have hands-on activities and what kind of experiences the kids are going to have and what they expect out of the lesson. I, I'm thinking that when you see widespread problems with the ELLs not thinking they're capable of doing this, that maybe the PLCs is the place where the professional development needs to happen. And I just think... And I just think that you do so much better as a group when you can, especially when you don't have an observer. Sometimes you can be really honest about your needs and other teachers can help you that way. So I, I'm wondering if there's the professional development. Content may actually be quite good, but it's just being given, you know, just a chance to put it in a different situation. The other thing is, my background when I was in equity education, it was gender equity. And one of the most dangerous things you could do to a little girl is learned helplessness. That little girls actually learn that they are helpless. Oh, you poor little thingy, little sweet thing, you know? You can't do math. You can't, you know, do whatever it is because you're just a little girl. And that's a killer. It's just a killer. And I, I know, I've told fellow, fellow board members that I think being a woman is a really hard thing in life. And you need to be tough and strong. And that's, you're not doing anybody a favor when you say, oh, you poor little girl. And I don't think we're doing anybody a favor by seeing students as weak or deficient. That they're just students who need a challenge and some belief.
We used to. You hear people say all the time, all of us, all students can learn. And we had internalized at one of my previous employers that all students will, will learn. Which means that we as the adults take personal responsibility for meeting the kids where they are and getting them to where we want them. We were always talking about climbing the mountain to college. But again, this, this is, this is what, this, I have to take responsibility for what I do. And all of us in here have to take responsibility for what we do as individuals. And then we have to internalize that on our campuses, on everybody through the campus, to the way Mr. Gilbert is approaching his job. Like, everybody's got to feel that way. Everybody's got to believe in the kids. So.
If, if I could, can I share something, Dr. Watson? I apologize. Can I jump in here? And I, I, my goal at this moment, and I see that people are really taking this information in. I know it's a lot to absorb. I know that over the next few days, you'll be thinking even more about it. But I don't want you guys to miss two specific things. And it is not my goal right now to try to kind of virtually rub you guys on the back and say, it'll be okay, right? That's not what I'm trying to say here, but I don't want you to miss two specific things. One of them is I really want you to look at some of the language and some of the recommendations or some of the findings where we say some, right? Where we say some of the schools are these things. Because frankly, there are pockets of greatness in Spring ISD. I mean, A, as exhibited by Manuel and Kayden tonight, which is dynamic. The gentleman that you spoke about, Mr. Adams, who's going to Harvard. And frankly, Karone and I were blessed to see some school leaders. You know, we want people to keep their anonymity, but they are dynamic. Like, we, we, we left meetings, Karone and I would call each other, like, did you hear that? Did you see what they were saying? So I know we, particularly those of us who have a sense of responsibility and are, and are driven, we take this information to heart and we really get caught up in the, the area that we think is negative. But A, I want to point out the pockets of greatness. I mean, literally as exhibited tonight, so I don't have to make that up. Like, you guys see some of the benefits of your school, your district. The other piece I don't want you to miss, and I really give Dr. Watson a lot of credit in this, is that even during the pandemic, he chose to engage in this work, right? Even school districts across the country that were gung ho about this equity work, COVID provided the perfect storm for them to kick this down the road for like, who knows, three, five years? Some schools have literally said, call us back like in 2023 and maybe we'll do it, right? Because they're not willing to face this work. And I also want to just really frankly say, we're engaging in an equity audit in another state. I will not name the state. But I want to be so frank with you all that literally we're on focus groups and calls where people are saying things to us like, what's up with all this equity work? Why do we have to talk about equity? What's this, what's this race culture? Like, why do we even have to talk about these things? I don't want you to miss the fact that you have right now a community of people who are so ready to do this work. I mean, the response from Mr. Durant and from, from Dr. Jensen are speak, and, and Mr. Adams, are speaking to how connected and committed we are to this work. And I mean, parents, teachers, students, literally writing us emails, telling Dr. Hina Hosa, like, thank you for allowing me to share. Thank you for allowing us to have a voice. You're at a pivotal time where if you can galvanize the people right now, you can really shift moving forward. The next two to five years of your leadership can be pivotal in Spring ISD in addressing these factors. Because you as a board, the Dr. Watson as a superintendent, and literally the families are ready to do this work. We've gotten zero pushback from anyone who wants to involve or speak their, their, their truth. And sadly, in another equity audit, we're getting the polar opposite. We're getting people with just a closed-minded vision and they don't want anything to change. So I don't want you guys to lose that in this work.
I also wanted to add on that we've seen improvements in some of this work over the decade that I've been here. And some of the things that we've instituted and put in place, I think we just need to, to continue to strive. We saw, I think it was a much larger disproportionate between black males going into special ed. We've brought that down. I mean, we've, we've done some good things. We have our own PD campus that we've set up. So we've poised ourselves to start to pivot and turn, turn it around. And I just, I know we have work to do, but I, I want, I think it's kind of hard to share this data in an environment that has been shared tonight in the way it's been shared with our principals. That, to me, I think is, is kind of tough. But I, I have a lot of faith and confidence in the leadership team that you've built, Dr. Watson, and in you. And I would, I know they're going to go back with their action plans and, and nail the basics and make sure, you know, that we address the things. I am very a hundred percent behind the recommendations, Mr. Finn, that you have in here. I think they're, they're spot on. What I really want to know tonight, and I'd really like to hear from the principals, as I sit here, having been sitting here for fifteen years, what can we as a board do different to support you in this work? Because I, I'm looking at myself, like, what can I do different? What can we do different? And I'm hoping some of you have the courage to come up and share some of that with us, like.
They know our co-call them.
I know budget, so we need to look at the budget, but, you know, what can we do?
So let me just say, when I heard this data and watched it, I immediately started looking for an action plan because that's just how my brain works. The data is tough to hear, but I also know that we have done great work. We have done work around this. We've done work on my campus. We've done work on other campuses across the district. We've done this work. We just have to dig a little deeper and continue the work. And really stress to everyone who's involved in this work, how important it is to lay this foundation for our students and for our teachers and for the people who are in our communities. We just need some support. And I think that you as a board are already doing that support. As we go through the development of an action plan and the development of looking at ways that we can improve what our scholars get every day, we just need you to continue to support us. As we were at the board workshop the other night, as a principal, I was humbled at what you were willing to provide us as far as support was concerned as we work on our recovery plan for our students. It was deeply humbling to hear all of the support that you were willing to give to us as principals so that we can do what's best for our kids. So I just think that moving forward, we need to really take a deep dive and look at the recommendations that were made. How can we make those recommendations come to life on our campus? And then what do we need to do at the district level as far as some of those PD things that were talked about? The SEO components, the ESL components. Some of this is just, we need to all come together, especially for those new teachers who need that support, Dr. Jensen, like you said, new teachers need some additional support. And even as a principal who prides herself on having really good new teachers, I know that I need to do some work in that department. What other supports may need? The comments that were made are going to be helpful in the study. The comments that were made are going to be helpful to learning, to getting that work done and accomplished. Because they said they needed to look at the curriculum. I didn't think about that. So what do I need to do in order to make that accessible for them in the summer so that they can really get their hands on it? And more importantly, who do I need to provide them as a support as they go through that curriculum? Because they can't just look at it without some support there. So who else can I get to help them, support them through that summer work? So that's something that I was thinking about for my campus specifically. But just continue to support us and, and do what you're doing. And we promise you, we will get a great action plan together. And you will see great work and great results after that. Thank you.
Mr. Finn, can I ask, when did you conclude your work?
Wow, our last school visit might have been a week ago, two weeks ago at the most.
Because I, I look at some of the recommendations and like, I know when we were discussing the budget, we did talk about the head risk counselors and all of that stuff. So it, it seems like we're on the right pathway. I wanted to know, Dr. Watson, is, is there a recommendation that is kind of your favorite, if you will? The thing that you really are excited about jumping into?
All of them, actually. You know, there's, there's several things that go into excellent equitable outcomes for kids and to leave one of them out. I mean, we can't leave one out that's focused on kids. We can't leave one that's focused out on teachers. And so we've got to do all of them. I think they all link together to get the end result. We just have to develop the action plan to pace those out appropriately. As, because it's the work that we do. And so none of it is, is, is absent from what normal responsibilities are. We need to go deeper in.
I noticed that some of the recommendations kind of aligned nicely with the thing that we're going to talk about later this meeting, which is the, the, the new criterion for the board's, I guess, the leadership award. Core competencies around leadership and the behaviors that go along with those. And so I, I, I actually, when we get to that part, I feel pretty good about the way we're doing that.
You know, one of the other things to address, Mr. Durant's comment is, you know, we, I intentionally wanted the principals here tonight. I mean, one of the things we've been working on with Holesworth is transparency. And this is all of our data. I mean, it's not my data alone. It's like Ms. Warford said, it's, you know, she reflects on herself and her school. It's all of us. And, you know, it takes a lot of boldness for us as a community to get an equity study and to look at ourselves and to be transparent with ourselves. I mean, typically, most people don't want to even know this information, let alone say it in an open meeting. And I've said since I've been here that I will continue to be transparent because we can't do it alone. I'm not, and did not come in on a white horse to save the district. We have to work together, and that means having conversations transparently, understanding what we have to do as district leaders for our community, and most importantly, our students. And so it was hard to hear, but it's us looking in the mirror. And I would rather us look in the mirror and be transparent as we grow with our community. As they've said, our community is supportive. I'm not in our community all the time. Our community wants it for the district. They want it for their kids. We want it for them, and we have to come together to do it. And I would rather us come together to do it transparently and get it done and celebrate than to hide and only let a few people hear it and not be able to get the gains that we want to do. And I know we have the individuals out here that can do it. We're going to continue having more conversations, but that was one of the main reasons why we wanted to do it publicly.
Thank you. I know when I, I made a note at the top of page ten where he talked about the results from the student survey, where they say diversity, equity, and inclusion are important at my campus. And we had eighty-two percent. You know, I don't know if we had that kind of culture five years ago, you know? I mean, I think that's a strong foundation to start building on, to, to know that the kids feel that it's, that it's there. I mean, there, there are some very positive things here. I'd like to, you know, ask my colleagues or challenge them to look through the recommendations that we have before us and go back to the budget that we looked at last, it was a Thursday night, and see where we need to make adjustments in the budget to support these recommendations. I think as the chair of governance, maybe we need to go back and look at policy, where we support these recommendations from a policy perspective. I mean, it's one thing to say mandatory professional development, but I think we need to provide our leaders with the policy to support that when it doesn't happen. So I think we, you know, when I ask what are some of the things we can do, I think that's a starting point for us as a board.
My, my last comments on this topic is that, you know, we have spent quite a bit of time, about forty-five minutes, like, talking about a very important topic. It's very important and it's something we need to talk about. But I want to say that the scholars that come to our schools every day, we can't choose them. They're there to learn. We're there to provide the best opportunity possible for them. You know, charter schools or whatever, they can choose. They want to teach whatever. When we, when that child comes, that scholar comes to our campus, whether it's spec or whatever, we have to give that child the best opportunity to be successful. And I'm saying it personally because I live with someone that, which one day we had the opportunity to be successful. So to the principals and to all the teachers and to our presenters tonight, as long as, as long as we had it going in our mind that every child can be successful, every child can achieve, and every child can be the best they can be if we give them the twos to make it happen. Thank you, President.
Mr. Finn, we as a board realize that we have closed that gap in the last few years. Maybe not as fast as we wanted to, but throughout the last five years, we have closed our gap. And we know that equity is very important. Equality is not the same as equity. And we have tried to provide you with equality. But for the last couple of years, Mr. Finn, we realized that we did need an equity evaluation. So we were not afraid of the pandemic to go out and research someone who could help us with equity. We felt like we was providing equality, but it wasn't equity to meet the individual needs of all of our students. So we're happy about receiving your recommendations. We want to take it back and as Justine has indicated, dissect it. Because we have talked about requiring some mandatory professional development, especially for our first, second, or third-year teachers and giving them more support, not just leaving it up to them to go when they get a chance to, but make it mandatory in their contract that they complete so many hours of professional development. Now, what that professional development may be, we will have to analyze that as well, too. But we have looked at many of the recommendations, all in the interest of trying to provide what is best for our students and how we can make those scores. and how we can make those scores continue to go up and further close that gap. So thank you for this. We will continue to work on it and come back and talk with you at another time. I think we do want to know, Dr. Watson, where we will go with Cambridge with this so that we know in September where we are and what we need to do.
Absolutely. Our next steps are, I'm not forget the final report. We're going to continue working with them on the development of a plan. Really looking at the Equity Steering Committee that's there to really work with us in the development of that plan to move forward to implement. As you all remember, it is a part of our new strategic plan that'll be rolled out next month. Equity goes all the way through all of the pillars that you have already established for the district for the next five years. And you'll see evidence of that in that plan. So we're going to continue moving forward with that development and a real push on access and equity.
Thank you so much, President Newhouse. Thank you, Dr. Watson. I'll, I'll just say my last comment for the evening is that just now actually hearing Mr. Rant talk about policy change and budget change is where we believe that the rubber really hits the road, right? We've, we've done these reports in other districts and I'll be frank, I think they disappeared in some folder and are collecting dust somewhere right now, right? In some states, to be frank. And really it, it hits, it really hits home and makes systematic change for future generations when you address the policies like Mr. Rant was sharing, or when you have those kind of universal mandatory things for incoming teachers like you shared, President Newhouse. It, it, it will impact both the school immediately and for the long term when you address and adjust the policies. Your comments have been really thoughtful this evening. I know it's a lot to, to grasp and take in. We are available moving forward to answer questions and to continue to support. And we thank you once again, everyone, for the opportunity to share with you all this evening. Thank you so much.
Dr. Watson and the board, I'd just like to say, as a former superintendent overseeing 58 schools, that I want you to know that you have lots of assets in your district. And that I, as a former superintendent, had some of the same recommendations come to me in, in New York City. And I know, I know just from speaking with all the focus groups and staff and students and parents, this is absolutely something that's doable, that you and your wonderful team, your board, your assistant superintendents, teachers, principals can get done. I, I know that in my heart, I know that from speaking with everyone. And I have every confidence that the next time we talk to Spring ISD, you'll be very excited about the result.
I want to make a, I am not discouraged, I'm encouraged and motivated. And I, and I know we're going to get it back.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you all and good evening.
Have a good evening, everyone, and thank you.
Again, thank you, and we look forward to continuing to work with both of you. Well, all three of you, I should say, Renee, we did not hear from you. However, I should ask Renee, we don't want to leave you out. Is there anything you'd like to share with us?
No, it's, it's always a pleasure interacting with the folks in Spring ISD. And yes, thank you very much, President Newhouse and Dr. Watson for inviting us here tonight. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Well, I know we all are just taking a, a deep breath here. Well, we know that we have some work to do, but we know that we're in a good state and a good place, mind where we can do this work. So we are looking forward, the board is looking forward to supporting each of you. As Justine says, we are here to support you. So please don't feel that there's something you cannot ask us or want from us, that we won't try to provide for what is best for our students. So please leave here knowing that you have the board's support as we continue on this journey.
Cause we don't do it for the money, the big checks we get. We do it because we care, we care.
For y'all means. Thank you. We got a school day tomorrow. Hump Day. And I know some of you have a lot on your mind and you may want to leave and digest this now. So we're going to take a little break so we can give you an opportunity to leave quietly before we continue into the rest of our agenda. Thank you so very much, each of you, for attending tonight. Thank you, everyone. We will now continue with our agenda for tonight. At this time, I'd like, like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrooks.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson and members of the board. On Thursday evening, which seems like quite some time ago, we had a lengthy discussion about the start of the 2122 budget. And so we started off discussing where we are currently with our 2021 budget and the implications of the COVID-19 continuing pandemic on that budget. We had a review of what's happening at the legislative session right now and, and following some of the finance bills that we've been keeping an eye on. We looked at our first run, our first iteration of numbers in our proposed budget for the 2122 year, inclusive of or alongside the ESER III federal funds that were made available as part of the American Recovery Act. And then lastly, we had a look at the Spring ISD Recovery Plan, which in light of the new information that came to us this evening through the previous presentation, we know that there are some adjustments that we'll make to those plans and, and put numbers to those, those new adjustments as well and bring back to the board at a later time. One of the decision points that was a part of Thursday evening's presentation was surrounding compensation. And what compensation could we offer to our employees for that 2122 school year? And the topic of the conversation was largely parity and parity in pay. Okay, try differently. Thank you. So what we wanted to do was take a look back at the compensation increases that were provided as part of this current year's budget, the 2021 budget. And as we recall, we had a TASB pay study that compared Spring ISD to 15 of our area, area districts and suggested some equity adjustments that were necessary as well as a general pay increase. So in 2021, all of our staff members, all of our employees received a general pay increase of 2.5% of the control point for their, their job positions. And as mentioned before, throughout the entire pay scale, there were equity adjustments that were made to ensure that our compensation plan was aligned with the market. The overall total increase in our compensation as a result of both those, that 2.5% of a control point, general pay increase and those equity adjustments resulted in an overall increase of our compensation expenditures by over 3.7%. When you take into account the equity adjustments that were received in, in various positions, particularly in our paraprofessionals area of our compensation plan, there were employees that received as high as 15 to 20 plus percent increases due to those equity adjustments that were necessary to ensure that the, the funding, or excuse me, the positions were paid according to the market. So that was just a look back at what we have accomplished over the last year in order to ensure that our compensation package remained competitive. And so to the left here, or my left here, we have the starting teacher salary for pretty much all of the districts surrounding us, who we quite often compete with when we're hiring our teachers. And so we wanted to show that spring is actually positioned very well and competitively right now with our, with our starting teacher salary. And that's largely as a result of the work that was done as this 2021 school year budget was being developed. So on Thursday evening, the proposed budget that was brought forward to you had some potential compensation, a one potential compensation increase that was listed there. And it was $1,500 as a one-time retention stipend paid for all employees. And so the intent there was to do something similar to what we've done in previous years. And the reason for the focus on one-time cost is because, as you know, we're still in the process of recovering and establishing what our new normal will look like with our student enrollment, our student attendance, et cetera, going forward. And until we know that, we're being cautious with adding recurring expenditures to the district's budget. Because again, as mentioned the other night, our intent is to ensure that we're not falling off of a funding cliff when the federal funds that have been made available to the district are no longer available. We want to continue to make decisions that are sustainable going forward. So both option one and option two are one-time cost options. The first one, as mentioned, is a one-time retention stipend, same as what we've done in the past and in years where the budget was a bit uncertain. We would pay it on the November 24th paycheck. And though a one-time retention stipend, same amount for all employees, would not necessarily be considered a TRS creditable compensation. And then just another note is that all staff would receive the same amount. On Thursday evening, what, what you all asked us to do was to come back with the recommendation. And so option two is the recommendation from administration. And it too is a one-time salary increase. However, what we, what we're recommending is that we do a salary increase that's again, one time, that's similar to what was done last year. And that is to use the control point for each individual position within the compensation manual and use that control point and take 2.5% of that control point and then have that as the one-time salary increase that we provide to our employees for the 2122 school year. And so that would look different than what we've done in the past. For starters, we would take it and we would pay it in two lump sums. And that would be in December, around about our halfway point, end of the first semester. And the second payment would be at the end of the respective contract for an employee. And there's two asterisks on this slide, and so I want to make sure to address those two asterisks. This is, our attempt is to ensure that we structure this one-time salary increase in such a way that it will be considered TRS creditable compensation for our employees for this 2122 school year. And that's important because we want to ensure that if we have a teacher or if we have a staff member that's three to five years from retiring, then they would have this as credible compensation in that time period and would help benefit them as they're looking at retirement. But at the same time, this would still be a non-binding, non-recurring payment. And so we're doing all of our research and we're working with TRS to ensure that we do structure it in such a way so that it is credible compensation for our employees. And so that is the recommendation, that it's a meaningful increase, but yet it's also a, a one-time increase that's not binding the district to a recurring cost that would be adding to the district's budget.
Ms. Westbrooks, can you elaborate for me on control point? Are you talking market value?
In most cases, it's the midpoint. So we have our, our salary structure. So if we take the teacher salary plan and we, we have the minimum entry salary, around about the midpoint, which is about 15 years of experience if you're on the step. And then we look at the, the max, that control point is typically around the midpoint. And so that, it would be 2.5% of that amount, which is considered the control point. And the reason we call it the control point versus the midpoint is that there are times when it's slightly above or slightly below the, the midpoint. And that's why we call it control point. But in most cases, it's that mid, midpoint.
So last year, we, last couple of years, we did an audit and made decisions to make sure, you know, we were equitable in getting our staff competitive and parity or above our, other districts, so we could be competitive. Which option stops us from taking a step backwards from that? Cause I think we made, we've made a lot of progress over the last couple of years and I don't want to lose some of that progress right now.
Honestly, neither of those options will allow us to take a step forward.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yes, because they are both one-time. And so that means that the same 56,500 that we saw as our starting salary on the previous slide would remain the starting salary for 2122. And so quite frankly, quite honestly, if districts around us are doing a recurring and they increase their starting salary, we could see ourselves fall down that way.
And I'm not even so much concerned. I think we've done a really good job around teachers, but I'm talking paraprofessionals, our bus drivers, that were really low. We've spent the last couple of years trying to bring them up. I don't want to, I don't want to lose ground if we can avoid it.
Yeah, I know, Anna and I have gone back and forth with, with the same question that you have. You know, our, our recommendation is this, because we want to first see how many kids come back in the fall. Other people may take risks and we've seen how that's happened in other districts, we take a risk and you can't, you can't, and then you're hit hard. We want to make sure the kids come back. If the kids come back, if we go over our projected budget, then at this time next year, you all will be able to add that back. And so by doing this, the teachers for a year will still get an increase, plus their TRS contribution. So it's not hurting them. The only thing that is not allowed us to do to say, our, our base pay is higher than this. But remember, we have the teacher incentive allotment and spring reward that other districts don't have, which takes them even higher to, higher than this.
That's fair.
And so when we have that, we speak higher than that anyway.
Ms. Westbrooks?
Yes, sir.
I want to be clear in my understanding of TRS credible, creditable compensation. So as I understand, because I'm a TRS. And so as I understand it, at retirement time for me in the distant future, they will take three, they will average out my five highest years
Yes, sir.
of compensation and then base my pension, which is something that most folks don't get anymore, on a percentage, my vested percentage of those. Right? That's what you're doing, right? And so making this TRS creditable is a definite benefit
Yes.
for the employees.
Yes. Yes, sir. That's true. And that, and that's the intent here, is to make it something that is beneficial. Because we do, for all intents and purposes, pause when we have a one-time retention supplement or we do a one-time increase, then we're, we're not keeping up. But we wanted to at least allow the employees to have that benefit, that added benefit. And so it's, it's critical to ensure that we structure it appropriately. And that's why I have the asterisk there, because we want to make sure that we're taking those necessary steps to ensure that it does meet that definition for TRS creditable compensation.
Ms. Westbrooks, with the equity audit tonight, is this information we need to consider before we make any decisions on this? Or is this something you've kind of been taking into consideration all along?
So I do believe, and we'll, that's a, that's a great segue into the next slide. Okay, so this is option one, so I'll just move forward to option two, since that's where we're, we're kind of pausing to. So in ESER III, year one, the cost for this one-time salary increase at the 2.5% of the control point is 6.6 million. When you saw this last with the 1,500 for all employees included there, that cost was closer to about 7.8 million. And so what I want you to pay attention to is that bottom line amount in the ESER III year one column, that 11.9 million. that 11.9 million, that's the amount that's left over after supplanting and covering the, the baseline costs for general fund and after having some form of some compensation in there. That amount that's left, that 11.9 million, that's the amount that decisions are being made to address that spring ISD recovery plan. And our opportunity to address what we just saw in the equity, the equity review would be available in, in those dollars. We could use those dollars. So to answer your question, it's before, which means there's still funding available to address what we've seen in the equity audit, as well as all the other items that we need to address for learning loss. And you can see with the second option, slightly less. So it actually provides a little bit more funding available to address learning loss and address those items that we saw in the equity audit. And I wanted to take a moment to make sure that the million dollars isn't lost in the general fund portion. That's the continued focus on ensuring, and this may answer your question, Mr. Ant, the continued focus on ensuring that we keep our, our compensation plan equitable across the market. So there are some equity adjustments that are listed as recurring costs that will continue to ensure that we're aligned with the market at this point. And about 600,000 of that thousand is in the teacher schedule. And the larger portion after that is in the paraprofessional portion of our comp plan. Dr. Jensen, did that answer your question about the funding available? Okay.
So basically, on both options, well, on, on both plans, everyone's going to see some type of compensation, right?
Yes, sir.
Every, I'm just kidding, not everyone, every employee will see some type.
And for the teachers, the average amount coincidentally is about the same. And, and that's the 1,500. So it's the option one, the average, all teachers won't receive 1,500. Under option two, that midpoint is 1525. So the average teacher would receive 1525. So the amount's about the same for a teacher on option one and option two.
So everybody's getting two, two and a half percent based on the midpoint range of their role?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
So any other feedback regarding, I know you wanted us to go back and look at a more equitable solution? What do you all think?
No, I'm fine, uh, because attendance is driving everything. And so to be conservative until we know what our attendance is, is why we have Ms. Westbrooks. And I'm least.
I'd rather be in the position to not give it, uh, an increase than to have to lay folks off because we overtook too much risk, so. And if everything goes really well, then we can still give the increase.
That's true. Okay, that was, that was really it on the budget this evening, is bringing back that recommendation. And so we'll take this information and along with the information that we received in the previous presentation and bring forth some additional numbers for you at the June work session in preparation for the adoption on June 22nd. So we have another opportunity to look through some numbers before the adoption.
I, I did want to make mention under this item as well. It's a Thursday night's meeting when we presented the ideas around the plan. There was a lot of conversation at the table regarding sale. And we saw social emotional learning as a major piece in the equity study. Dr. Jensen was right on point with the push on that. And so we are making plans to definitely include that in. And looking at the staff as well, I know we had talked about the CYS workers as well as counselors and things of that nature. So all of those things are in the plan and actually we saw it in, in their plan tonight as well. So we'll, we'll have that update for you at the next meeting as well.
That's why I said a lot of it wasn't a surprise and a lot of it we've already started in that direction, so.
And I know I keep going back to the brain, but a lot of teachers seem to, uh, when they have frequency notions, they seem to think children are, uh, born with a set, uh, limit to their accomplishments. And, and my workshops way back when, I was always saying, you know, the brain is always growing connections and that's what you're doing in class. You are a sculptor of brains, neurons, that you're growing those connections in these kids' brains. And, um, as a kid, I had sometimes in my classes, they'd say, I'm just stupid and I don't understand this. I said, don't you dare tell me that. I said, now stupid is a frog. When you look at a human brain, it is an incredible, incredible organ. And don't you put that organ down that you've got, that you've got a wonderful inheritance there. But I just don't know that teachers and students appreciate, uh, what we got up there in our skull.
When I was getting my teacher training, they talked about it in terms of fixed and malleable intelligence. And like teachers needed to believe that all children's, all children had malleable intelligence. I taught math and so I identified with, I just can't do math. And parents and other teachers sort of inculcating students with that and then having, me having to be the one that undid that damage. So I understand where you're coming from.
They've had children with massive seizures of epilepsy where they've had half their brain removed. And they go on with the brain, half a brain they have, and they still can succeed in school. So, you know, just don't tell me these kids can't do this. They can, you know, uh, if you took Michael Jordan and never exercised him, had him just sit in a chair for 12 years, would he play basketball well? No, you know, and the same way with brains. If you just have them not using that thing, then it's not going to develop, so. I get off my hat.
Dr. Watson, uh, Anna and Dr. Watson, did we not address Thursday night, according to tonight's report about the additional counselor that's going to be concentrating on, uh, social emotionally, that's also part of the report tonight. I think we did have a conversation there, didn't we?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay, I just want to make sure, that's part of the report tonight.
It wasn't a part of the report this evening, but there's
A part of the report early on, that Chris gave himself.
It was definitely a part of Cambridge's report and we have that also in the report to look at that as well.
Thank you. If you will please continue with your next item.
Yes, ma'am. So our next item is we wanted to circle back to the cooperative purchases of $50,000 and over. And so it's not an, an action item this evening, but we wanted to come back particularly to address a question that Trustee Hodges asked the other night regarding the Zoom license support and the cost. And so we always want to do justice and do our due diligence and, and make sure we're responding appropriately. And so the report that you all receive each month, you see there's a date range across the top. And so everything that you see on here are purchase orders for, um, items purchased through cooperatives over $50,000 for that time period. So when we went back to investigate your question, we did find that, that $88,000 that we had a purchase order in the system for during that date range for the Zoom licenses, we had actually subsequently received a credit memo because we had changed our, our plan with the Zoom licenses and drastically decreased that cost. And so the actual cost was, um, $28,000 is what we're paying for our Zoom licenses. And so given the fact that this report is for purchases over 50,000, that updated amount wouldn't have come forward. So we wanted to make sure we circled back and, and that you asked a great question and we found the answer and you were absolutely correct that we were paying much less than what was on here. So there was a, a credit that was given back to the district. So just wanted to come back and, and make sure we address that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And that was, that was all that I had, President Newhouse.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. Our next item is a board governance committee update. So at this time, I'd like to recognize trustee and board governance committee lead, Justine Durant.
Thank you. I lost my document. Okay, um, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have two items tonight. One is a recommendation and ask for approval around the governance. Committee is recommending a change to the employee excellence award that we give out. And then Dr. Jensen's going to give us any updates she has from a legislative perspective. So I know that last year, staff across the district worked collaboratively to create a leadership definition in spring ISD. These terms anchored in research and best practices across industries and then reflected on the district's mission, our core values and our guiding principles to generate that definition. We, it resulted in a clearly defined set of behavior that demonstrates the expectations spring ISD has for every adult in our system and the belief that regardless of what their role or their title is, that everyone is a leader. We have three tenants that is outcome-driven, service-oriented and relationship-centered. Currently, our staff members across the district and campuses are utilizing these behaviors in their personal growth and development and incorporating the language to be recognized and celebrate the efforts of others all around them and within this district. So the leadership definition is being launched district-wide this year. Uh, I think it's been embraced by our administration, our staff, not just in the classroom, but all employees. And so the government's committee shared some information with you on Thursday night. But we would like to recommend that starting in the upcoming school year in the fall, that we align, uh, the employee excellence award criteria with the district's outcome-driven, service-oriented and relationship-centered leadership, uh, goals. And so I kind of shared with each of you what that is and the, um, tenants that are associated with it. And so at this time, I'll take any questions and, and ask on that, and President, if we can move forward with making that change. I do know that, uh, trustee Adams, who is my colleague on the committee, had some comments he'd like to add as well.
I just want all of our, uh, teachers and all of our staff to be aware that there is a web page on our website with a resource for more information about the three core competence competencies that trustee Durant just mentioned and the behaviors that we should all be looking for and reinforcing amongst ourselves as we go through our day-to-day, uh, work, um, that we will be looking for when we review, uh, folks that have been nominated for this award. So that resource is, like I said, it's on, I keep typing in the search bar when I go to the spring ISD website. I just type in leadership definition and it gets you to that page, the lead spring page where those competencies are.
And we're all leaders, no matter what role you're in. And this award is designed for an opportunity for all. And so I think it really aligns with the intent of, of why we implement it. The, this opportunity to recognize our true leaders and those that are demonstrating a leadership within our district.
And the other thing, just the other thing is that there is a resource on that page with, uh, the, the link is campus package and the other one is central office package that sort of lays out for each staff member, how, what, what the core competencies are and what the expected behaviors are at whatever level, whether you're in a classroom, whether you're a staff person and not one of our cafeterias or whether you're a person at central administration. There's, uh, competencies and behaviors for every person in the district.
So in all fairness, we want to leave the, this year in place so that we're, um, consistent and looking at bringing this forward in the 2122 school year.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion that the board of trustees approve the criteria for the employee excellence award as discussed.
Madam President, I move that the board of trustees approve the criteria for the employee excellence award as discussed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly Hodges, seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the board of trustees approve the criteria for the employee excellence award as discussed. Again, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, trustee Durant, please continue.
Okay, our second item, our, our legislative priority update, and I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Jensen.
Last month, I presented a list of some bills that we have been watching all along. And, uh, I gave you an update of what the Texas legislative website has on the history of these bills. Some of them have changed at this point and some have not. I am going to be asking trustee Adams to join in on this. I gave him some printouts of the history of these bills so that if you want to comment, if you don't want to comment, that's fine too. Senate Bill two, that's the big one, that's the full funding of, um, House Bill three from the last legislative session. It's passed the Senate, sent to the House, now it's referred to state affairs. That sounds like it's coming right along, correct?
Yeah, so as a general rule, uh, low bill numbers are the lieutenant governor and governor's priorities and the speaker's priorities. And so when a bill number gets like SB two or HB two, that's generally gonna happen. The only question is how many amendments might get tacked onto it. But generally, you don't mess with the speaker's bills and you don't mess with the lieutenant governor's bills or the governor's bills, so that this one is likely to happen.
All right, on Senate Bill 28, do you have any comments on that, trustee Adams? This is the one where Benton Court is trying to make it easier for approval of open enrollment charter schools with no local oversight.
Yeah, I don't, I mean,
It looks like it's still there.
Committee since, uh, yeah. Yeah, I don't, no, I don't have any comment on that. It's still there.
Is this the one where, uh, Representative Dutton didn't get what he wanted and so he?
No, that was
No, that was a different one, okay. Senate Bill 272, uh, and this is about having a non-voting student trustee. And it's been placed on the intent calendar. It doesn't sound like it's making much progress.
Yeah, it hasn't been heard in the House.
Yeah. The next one, Senate Bill 338, uh, and this is, uh, construction contracts. That is going through, so it sounds like a, a good thing to, um, uh, have go through.
Repeat that, Debbie, that one is what?
I'm very muffled with this ask. It relates to the adoption of uniform general conditions for building construction contracts entered into by school districts in the composition of the committee that reviews uniform general contractor, contracted conditions. So when, uh, Mr. Miranda spoke to us last month, it sounded like it was a good thing to have happen.
All right, Senate Bill Seven Forty-Six is requiring the parent of a student enrolled in a school district to provide and update the student's contact information. And that's, I haven't gotten any more progress on that, but it's just been sent to the House. The question is, how do you enforce this and who enforces it? That was,
Seven Forty-Six.
Senate Bill Seven Forty-Six. Okay. House Bill One Thirty with, says it alleviates taxpayer funds being spent on toll road charges. It's got a favorable report without amendments, so that sounds like it's actually having some movement. House Bill Three Three Two, ISTs could use compensatory educational allotment forms for SEL programs, and that passed the House. So that is looking good. House Bill Seven Forty-Nine prohibiting ISTs from paying in association to lobby for them, which means we wouldn't be able to pay, has been lobbying for us. That is pending. That is not making progress, yay. House Bill Thirteen Ninety-One makes a tax rate election hazardous for school support where it's a no-win situation. You always get the lower tax rate. That also is left pending, pending, so that is not making any progress. So we're still hoping that that's not a, the tortoise and the hare race. I hope that tortoise doesn't win this race. Okay. House Bill Fifteen Twenty-Five, Huberty. The House Bill Three Cleanup Bill that it's been passed, passed the House and sent to the Senate. Do you want to make any comments on that, trustee Adams? This is House Bill Fifteen Twenty-Five.
That bill's discussed today, wasn't it? That's huge, right?
Yeah.
That was discussed today or yesterday, wasn't it?
That's what the date says.
I don't know what, what action was taken, but it was discussed today.
Yeah, that's his HB Three Cleanup Bill, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was discussed today. Everybody's following that one.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, it's still,
That's a positive impact for us, if that one.
Yes.
Right, Ms. Westbrook?
Okay.
That one is the one that has the CTE of allotment changes in it. And so it was, it was slightly to the negative for us. We're going to lose unless there's changing to our CTE courses that could generate a little bit more funding. But as, if we look at it right now, we were losing about three hundred and sixty thousand.
So we don't want that one.
Right, and that one has passed out of the House and it's in the Senate. And there are some, there are some language changes in the Senate Committee right now that we're studying and really want to make sure that we get a good understanding of what the intent is and how that'll impact us. And we'll definitely be talking to you more about it once we were able to get more information on the intent.
Okay. House Bill Three Two Seven Oh. This is, Dutton is the primary author. And it uses, prohibits using local taxpayer funds to defend against state actions. So if you get sued by the state or have a, some kind of edict coming from the state, you don't get to use taxpayer funds to defend yourself. That sounds like it's kind of stalled. It says it was sent to the calendars on April twenty-two and nothing else has happened.
Yep. Rep. Allen raised a point of order. So there was something that the speaker ruled that there was a material issue with the bill. And so that had to go back to the committee.
Alma Allen?
Yes.
That was Three Two Seven Oh.
This is the, the, the HISD bill.
I have a PDF file of all this. I'll just send it to all the trustees if you're trying to keep up with this. House Bill Three Four Four Five, brought forward by Huberty, was going to require us to use excess funds to pay down debt, cut taxes, and so on. And that is pending. That's not going anywhere. House Bill Three Eight Four Six prohibits districts of innovation from changing the school year start and end dates. And amazingly, that seems to be stalled. House Bill Three Eight Eight Oh, this is Dutton, and it's relating to a student's eligibility for special education services. And there's no action on that at this point in the Education Committee. House Bill Four Four Six Five, Dutton again, gives the TEA Commissioners control of federal stimulus funding intended for public schools by means of state control of TEA grant programs. And that was sent to the calendars on four twenty-nine. I don't see any progress at this point. Do you hear of anything like that? No, okay. I would like to recommend one more time, since we belong to Tasby. You know, you get Tasby Legislative Reports just by request. These are the people who live up there in Austin, who go to all these meetings. They know the people, they hear the rumors, they talk to everybody. And when they send out something that's in caps, that there's a danger and there's a close vote and that kind of thing, it behooves us to pay attention to it. Now, we had decided early on that we were going to really concentrate our attention on this legislative process, on our priorities within the district. So we weren't including all kinds of things that come up and they're important. So I just really, really recommend that you, if you have not already signed up for those Tasby Legislative Alerts, you really need to do that. Okay. That concludes that, and I can just send out this, do you mind, Jeremy? Send me out the PDF file to everybody. Actually, there's been some rays of sunshine here. You know, the beginning with some of these things that were proposed scared the dickens out of me. And there's still reason to fear a bit, especially when you read these things and like, I never knew I needed to worry about that, but. So. You're welcome.
Thank you to the Governance Committee. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resources and Human Capital Accountability, Dr. Julie Hill.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and Dr. Watson. This is an item that we had in the work session last Thursday that we're bringing back because we need to vote on it. It's our District of Innovation, an amendment that we'd like to submit. And I do believe, from recalling from last Thursday, trustee Durant will be abstaining. And so basically, all we need is a vote, unless there are any other questions.
Are there any more questions? We did cover this thoroughly on Thursday night.
So this is the amendment that will allow for an extra option for health insurance for our employees, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Mr. Adams, because it does pertain to medical benefits and insurance, Ms. Durant will be abstaining herself from the vote.
I understand.
Okay. So I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment to Spring ISD's District of Innovation Plan to add an exemption that would allow Spring ISD to potentially provide a choice of medical benefits programs to its employees.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment to Spring ISD's District of Innovation Plan to add an exemption that would allow Spring ISD to potentially provide a choice of medical benefits programs to its employees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams, seconded by Dawn Davis, that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment to Spring ISD's District of Innovation Plan to add any, an exemption that will allow Spring ISD to potentially provide a choice of medical benefit programs to its employees. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries with a vote of six, four, and one abstentions.
Thank you very much.
You feel?
Perfect. We'll begin the process to submit to TEA. Thank you.
As we continue tonight, our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Equity, Dr. Lupita Hinaosha.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson. We are on page fifty, forty-nine and fifty. So this is an item you've seen before. We bring it to you every year. And this is our annual certification that our board and superintendent have to do. The certification is that we are using our IMAT or our instructional materials allotment budget only for expenses that are allowed by the Texas Education Code. And the materials and resources or expenses that we purchase using these funds must cover the Texas Education Knowledge and Skills or the TEACs that are required in the curriculum adopted by the state. And so what you have before you is the form that we will be completing, stating that we attest that all purchases made by these, using these funds are aligned to the Texas Education Code and most importantly, aligned to the state's TEACs and curriculum. And so we are recommending that the Superintendent of Schools, Board President, and Board Secretary approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two textbooks, textbook allotment and TEAC certification.
Thank you, Dr. Hinaosha. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two text allotment and TEAC certification.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two textbook allotment and TEAC certification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly Hodges, seconded, I think, by Winford Adams, that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two textbook allotment and TEAC certification. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. So our next item is the Consent Agenda. And as we would like to remind everyone that we cover items thoroughly during our work session from the consent agenda. So tonight, I will entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any further questions, discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Sections five five one point oh seven one, five five one point oh seven two, five five one point oh seven four, and five five one point oh seven six. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now ten oh two PM. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is twelve twenty-three AM. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam, Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution of TEA Docket Number One Two Eight dash S E dash zero three two one, according to the terms discussed in closed session, and authorize the superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Winford Adams, that the Board of Trustees approve resolution of TEA Docket Number One Two Three S E Oh Three Two One, according to the terms discussed in closed session and authorize the superintendent to execute all necessary documents. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate at the end of the contract term the probationary contracts of Nicholas Allen, Yolanda Calhoun, Tanika Green, Eric James, Deborah Ligon, and Joel Rice, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter Twenty-One of the Texas Education Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams, seconded by Justine Durant, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate at the end of the contract term the probationary contracts of Nicholas Adams, Yolanda Calhoun, Tanika Green, Eric James, Deborah Ligon, and Joel Wright, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter Twenty-One of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of the following employees: Tornisha Booker, Crystal Brown, Gerardo Cabrera, Maria Madrano, Lakeisha Smith, Lamic Thomas, and Corey Turner, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter Twenty-One of the Texas Education Code.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen and seconded by Janet Gonzalez that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the non-renewal of the term contracts of the following employees: Tanika Booker, Crystal Brown, Geraldo Gabarero, Maria Madrano, Lakeisha Smith, Lamic Thomas, and Corey Turner, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter Twenty-One of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move the board withdraw its prior action proposing the non-renew term contract of the following employee, John Marshall, as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been, it's been moved by Jenna Gonzalez, seconded by Winford Adams, that the board withdraw its prior action proposing to non-renew the term contract of the following employee, John Marshall, as presented in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose, to propose the non-renewal of the term contract of John Marshall, as presented in closed session, and authorize the superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Winford Adams, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the non-renewal of the term contract of John Marshall, as presented in closed session, and authorize the superintendent or designee to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one-year period the probationary contracts of the employees identified in the superintendent's recommendation as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams, seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one-year period the probationary contracts of the employees identified in the superintendent's recommendation as presented in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one-year period the term contracts of the employees identified by the superintendent's recommendations as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Jenna Gonzalez, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew for a one-year period the term contracts of the employees identified in the superintendent's recommendation as presented in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none, since there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn tonight's board meeting.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Kelly Hodges, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at 12:32 AM.